The town meeting of the town election, its annual meeting report. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. Please rise. My pledge of allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to God, who takes us in as one nation, under God, individual, believing, and just as for all. Thank you. Since there are oftentimes many meetings we've been coming to our town meetings, which is a wonderful thing, I thought before we say the meetings, we would introduce ourselves. So I will start so that we have an agenda and we can go down the list. And our chairman of the selectmen is on her way. She's in route. Finance committee.
Aiden Lo, finance committee.
Thank you. And the school committee?
Hello, I'm Ryan Forsyth, school committee.
Great, fine, school committee.
Hi, Garvey, school committee.
Please join the school committee.
Angela Gonzalez, and the school committee.
Thank you. And the people up here, Coral Rock, your town moderator.
Matthew Serhiv, town council.
Wendy Stevens, town clerk.
Thank you so much. Before we move on, I would ask Vice Chairman Moore to make a presentation.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. For many of you, maybe you've been following in the newspaper or online, and you know that our town met with Justin Solzback. This is his last town meeting with us. He is moving on to Greenup Hashes close to his family, and will be meeting us around July. It's been quite an interesting journey when we first brought Mr. Solzback on. He had visions, and he stepped forward and instituted those, that vision, right from the start. So it was a good ride, and I'm sorry it only lasted a couple of years, which it could have lasted longer. But I understand the need to be near your family. Just to give you an idea of some of the things that have happened during the last couple of years. He took us out of the shadows of COVID, helped the town get through that. He positioned our financials for a credit rating increase, which we got. That's good news for the town to get that credit rating increase. He got the work started, and this one's starting real soon, on the old Bergark and Town Hall renovations. Worked with the Winchester Community Powers Committee and Robinson Brothers Foundation on the Amphitheater, which is going to open officially on June 10th this year, so I hope everyone will show up for that. If you've seen, he's cleaned up Beach Street. The building down there by the bridge has been removed, and that's going to be a park for the town footfalls of Winchester. Central Street is finally being revitalized, and the street will be done in a few months. And the final coat will be put on that street, and the street lighting is all done. So that was a major thing to get accomplished. And of course, the big thing, we worked with Beacon Hill and our congressional work team to secure funding for the water main line from Ashmanham, which is critical to the success and future of this town. So as a member of the Board of Selectmen, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and Town Hall, I would like to thank Justin Solzback for putting his hands in service to the town of Winchester.
I didn't prepare any remarks, but I do want to stress that those compliments, and I appreciate the second of them. You group effort, our staff, there's an exceptional staff here. And so I should ask the community to continue to appreciate them, embrace them, and acknowledge them. You have an excellent team of professionals here. A lot of the infrastructure things are doing as well. Mr. Crowder over there, really.
Before we get started, we operate by Robert's rules of order, newly revised. I ask you to please respect the opinions of the county officials. Your speakers from this audience were all here for one purpose this evening. That's to disapprove or take action on the articles that are presented before you for the town of Winchester. So please respect opinions. If you wish to speak, because we are recording this, you need to come up to the microphone. And I sometimes can't see you if you're standing at the back of the hall, and we're not going to hear you. So please be sure to come up to the microphone to speak. I will recognize the speaker, and you need to provide your name and address again for the records of our minutes. You're only allowed to speak two times on a particular topic. I said, "two times." And I will ask you to sit down if you come up for the third. As I just said, "two times." And please, no disruptions into this meeting. Disruptions result in weakening the meeting and not getting anything accomplished. I know people have some really important issues in their hearts. And I know that people who sometimes disrupt do it because they're so passionate. But please keep that under control. And I'd like to notify you that we are being videotaped this evening for local TV stations. Okay, we're going to practice using your little quarters tonight first, as we always do. Article one is the special town meeting. And you're going to see that we're going to vote to pass over the article. So we're going to practice. Do you have a report before I go into practicing? It's been moved in, seconded to pass over Article one, because there's no business. If you are in favor of passing over the article, press one or A. If you're not in favor of passing over, press two or B. If you see an X, it means your vote didn't count. Hit it again for what you need. Okay, are we ready? All those in favor of Article one of the special town meeting, press one or A. If you're opposed, press two or B. Let's see how we do. Oh, you have 10 seconds. Okay, can you show us the results? 94% yes. 6% want to listen to the finance committee. Okay. Let's go on to Article two. Article two is a required majority vote, and it will be read by select person Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move the town vote to reperpare free cash for some $260,000 to the payment of FY23 snow and ice deficit.
It's been moved in, seconded to accept Article two as presented. Does, um, would you speak, make with the motion, please give your remarks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The snow and ice budget is weather dependent fluctuation from the end year. It is coupled with the increasing material costs resulting in the snow and ice deficit at point three. Here, we're impending one in this free cash, and we require a majority vote.
Does anyone in the audience have a question or wish to make a comment? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article two as presented, press one or A. If you are opposed, press two or B. Voting has ended, and the votes are 92% in favor, 8% opposed. The article passes. Article three, please turn the page.
I'm sorry.
Article one of the regular town meeting. And someone from the finance committee, you're going to read that one? It's been moved in, seconded to approve the finance committee Article one as presented. Would the maker of the motion wish to speak?
The free cash is not a business, it sounds like something you still do this. What the free cash is, is money that is left over from previous years' offers of the town. So the town has a budget, spends money on expenses. It identifies where the revenues come from. And at the end of the year, if you didn't spend all the money on expenses, or if you took in a little more revenue than you had anticipated, you have a balance, and that balance is called free cash. Free cash is not reappearing social revenue. It is, it's not something that is built in to your revenue package the way you said your real estate tax is. So it's one-time money, considered one-time money, and it should be used for one-time purchases. Typically, we use free cash for capital purchases, for beating warehouses, VW trucks, use that to pay off free cash. Also, we use it to put the tank or hoodie deck, in case something happens in the course of the year, or maybe to draw on funds. Free cash can only be spent after voting the town beat. So what we've had in the last seven years is a very steady increase in our free cash account. We passed a policy that set a goal of carrying the free cash account equal to about 5% of the overall budget, which would be about $0.26 million. They, we've been pretty close, even on that dollar of the year. What we, we look back at free cash, so we were in a deficit situation, and we didn't have any free cash. And we had, 2018 and 2019, we used all our free cash to pay off the deficit loan, to bail out the town. But since then, we've been able to put some away. Currently, we have a little over $1.2 million in free cash. One of the things we don't want to be using free cash for, reoccurring expenses with the town. In other words, if you've got something that the services that you provide in the town, we need the budget, the debt, and the town budgets, not then the free cash. Because free cash is something that comes and goes, spending for one-time things, not recurring expenses. The page that shows you the cost of stormization accounts, that we just passed an article to take $260,000 out of free cash, because of this, some of the shortfall in stormization accounts. So the nicest kind of interest in accounting that the state allows, it's the only line item in the budget, that the state allows the town to go spend more than it's been budgeting before. So the town can go over this budget and use that money next year to reduce the line item that can be increased in taxes. So the tax will be this year's overage compared to next year's budget. What we've done in terms of tax is to deal with the increasing cost of co-act people, is develop a reserve fund, which we have, sorry, to do raise or lower, as opposed to the co-act fund. And we showed, in 2021, we added $93,000 of reserve funds. You can see from the chat that the actual cost of co-acts has increased dramatically dramatically over the last couple of years. And the primary reason for that is the increased cost of materials, that is, the salt that's included in roads to deal with safety issues in private. The, uh... The other part of the cost of co-act is these overages, like the prices to the law enforcement, and how the roads are spread the salt. One of the things that we've noticed is that, you may say, "Well, why would we have to always spend that budget by almost a half a million dollars?" The witness we've had last year, the nonparticular difficult witness. But what we've seen is that there are more days of fewer snowstorms, but more days where we have ice storms. As she wrote, in the frequency of that below, the light, the salt and the roads is dragging the cost of materials. So this year, we've spent, we've budgeted $250,000, and we spent $760,000. We've got almost a half a million dollars that we have to make up at the end of the year. We covered $260,000 of education with the October 6th asset. And the $200,000 were covered with the construction of the, um, with the, when we now sell the taxes and mortgages for pet parks and the trade. But that's money that would have been free cash next year if we didn't have to do that this morning. Not suggesting that, you know, with the stormy numbers or expenses, not the children, they have. Well, we're not known, is we're not hiding from them, and not the question. And we would expect that there'd be some fluctuation, and it isn't possible, and it needed to come in another month. But what the trends show is that, by the time, we are subsidizing the expenses of stormization movement with our free cash account. So free cash, the end of the evening, we're about $2 million of free cash. It's a tax, it's so nice to protect without losing an article, $260,000. Article 17, we spent $234,000 for cat light. And Article 22, we've allocated $550,000 to K and D's. Now, as, we would expect that you will see some additions to our, uh, free cash account when the budget is certified at the end of the summer. We have no idea exactly how much, and I think what we're, we're quite informed, because it's, it's, it won't be as much money as we've seen in the last few years. There's another reoccurring expense that we do financing with free cash. And that's, okay, which is other post-reform, uh... Basically, what other post-reform references are, health insurance costs for retirees. So what's our, uh, town's what is, uh, we can't continue to pay for their pensions. What we don't do is accept anything, any money for that on a non-goal basis, knowing that down the road, we're going to have to pay for that health insurance. Think about what we do for retirement. We're paying for retirement while we're working, because that's a big benefit that we get once we retire. The health insurance is a sentiment that we definitely have, and we need to be paying for it. So we build up a reserve account, a reserve trust, that will help, will cover a lot of parts of the town. But certainly, it helps the town be able to handle, uh, the impact of the town. The health insurance is a part of the, the one budget item that increases the amount of the... So what we're looking at is situations that are incredibly challenging for the town to be able to balance this budget and live within its limits. And very concerned that, but now, we're looking at about $600,000 a year of reoccurring expenses that we're not budgeting for. It's not something you're going to see in this year's budget, but we're aware, the town's going to have to recognize that we need to look at strategies that are going to allow us to budget, even if you're on the, uh, the expenses that are reoccurring.
Please come up to the microphone and ask your question. Remembering you to do your name and address. Name and address, please.
Now, I hear you talking about the health cloud, like, those that pay the, uh, health or not Medicare, or retirement healthcare, because I work for the government too. And I go to a job, we go to Medicare, and they redo a public. So are you doing private or are you doing public healthcare?
That's, that's their answer. Obviously, we're retired, we're sixty-five, we're eligible for Medicare. How people retired, we're more than Medicare, Medicare, and they stay around the, unless they, uh... Unless they reach the sixty-five, sixty-six, they're the one thing that, you're eligible for our reduced health insurance, supplementing them.
So is that more of a private insurance, or is that going to be, uh, we pay market, party, and party?
Well, it's, it's a private insurance in the sense of the town, uh, the private insurance for some of the patients. It's not the same insurance, once they retire.
Question entered. Yes? Okay. Any other questions? Please come forward. Thank you, Mr. Kane. Hearing none. I will move on to, what was the vote of the Board of Selectmen on this article?
Board of Selectmen voted to recommend five zero.
Thank you. And the finance committee? Hearing no more questions, we will vote on this article. The Article one is to approve the finance committee report. Using your clicker, if you are in favor of approving the finance committee report, press one or A. And if you are opposed, press two or B. Please vote. And it is 90% in favor, 10% no. As I said, it was a majority vote earlier. The motion passes. Article number two will be read by selectwoman LaPointe.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. And we sent the town vote to establish PEG, PAG, media enterprise account. Would you approve Article two?
It's been moved in, seconded to approve Article two as presented. This will require a majority vote. Would the maker of the motion be interested in making the presentation?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So if approved, this article will create a PAG media enterprise account. Establishing an account like this will increase transparency, ensure the proper and timely maintenance of our broadcasting equipment, and ensure we honor our commitments to the government and Comcast cable agreement. So historically, either supposed to have an enterprise account set up for this, it was never done, and we've been noncompliant. And so this will bring us into compliance with how the, um, the funding account needs to be structured.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions? Hearing none. The vote of the selectmen on this article was?
Five zero, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. And the finance committee?
I have the committee recommended five zero.
Thank you very much. Using your clickers, all those in favor of Article two as presented, press one or A. If you are opposed, press two or B. Please vote. The vote is 89% in favor, 11% opposed. It is a majority vote article, and therefore the article passes. Article three will be also read by selectwoman LaPointe.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. And we sent the town vote to establish an op-uate remediation stabilization fund, and a pre-article to be printed. And further, to accept the fourth paragraph of Massachusetts Digital Law Chapter 40 sent to privacy, and dedicate 100% of the op-uate settlement money to this.
Second. It's been moved in, seconded to approve Article three. This will require a two-thirds vote. Are there, uh, would you like to speak to the vote?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The vote to approve Article three would establish an op-uate remediation stabilization fund. This fund, the whole fund, will be received as part of the class action lawsuit in mediation with the op-uate process. And I would invite the town managers to speak for it.
Town managers, call them.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and I think you hit the nail on the head. So a fair lot of probably residents' papers over the past decade or so more, at this point, that there's been a pretty rampant review of crisis from through the communities. And some of the larger class action lawsuits rolling through the courts. The town of Winchester was participating in one of those, through the Massachusetts, through the Attorney General's Office. And along those other communities in the top of the world, we are successful in holding some of the larger corporations accountable. And so there is a payout, it's a $300,000 plus payout, but it's being doled out over a 16-year period. And so with the amount of money that the town is going to be receiving on an annual basis, you can't really make that hard to tackle. And so it was a recommendation of the Attorney General's Office to try and band together and, you know, as regionalized effort. So we're working together with, I believe it's Gardner, Templeton, Westminster, and Ashfordale. They funded additional, uh, I guess substance abuse officer, effectively, through Gardner. But also specific power bucks to benefit publicity initiatives in Wichita as well, the whole events, which in the Pacific, so that people don't have to necessarily travel to Gardner for that purpose. And so Article three, Article four, and Article five, what you're voting on are effectively financial mechanisms that are legally, basically telling us to accept that money and then allow us to spend that money for that purpose in perpetuity. So the first vote is to accept it, Article three. Article four would be a vote to appropriate those funds in perpetuity, so you don't have to keep doing this every single year. And then Article five is going to be just for the purpose of appropriating it for the first time this year. So once you get the ball rolling on that, throughout the entirety of that settlement, the town will be able to accept those funds and then expend those funds for that purpose.
Does anyone have any questions? Please come up to the microphone and name and address, please. Please come up to the microphone and name and address, please.
Dina Santos, one seventeen, Mills Street. I just had a general question in regard to opioid awareness and such. Was, I remember, recall a few years ago, there was like a group or some kind of, you know, Wichita in wonders or someone like Jennifer Sidley, I believe, and maybe a few others that were awarded or appointed as like an opioid awareness. She was the C.A.'s Agent Director and such. Is she going to be involved in this, or is there going to be, like, any circus on there?
I'm not familiar with that specific initiative, but it may have worked in something else. Or the addition that we're working with directly is Gamma. But we still do have, like I said, town-specific initiatives, and that's a part of our stress and a part of the board's stress as well, as we didn't want to see this money disappear to Gardner, which is a concern that I share as well. So we do have some town-wide issues. Focus initiative, for example, chief law師, my table's people were, people want to hear about it. But things to help try to address the issue here in Wichita, and these funds will help fund that, that specific role for the officer that's going to be in charge of that, for example. So the guard things in town we're addressing, but the one that you called out specifically, I'm not familiar with.
There was a task force that we need to choose.
Does that ring a bell, chief?
Oh, no, it doesn't.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
Yes, so that was kind of a separate effort by just a community, or if it wasn't necessarily tied up to the town, but I also want to stress that these three articles really only speak to this first settlement that's been settled. There are others in the works which would require action in the future, and this one is only one that has already been settled, so this doesn't tie us in the future to others.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, please come forward, give your name and address. Can I have an answer from the town manager?
We didn't hear the question.
So Mr. Warner, pleasure to see you as well. He was asking what the abatement strategy is for specifically, so those are, those are being coordinated by Gamma, so I could have called on specifically chief, I was on the top, I'll learn about the work that you're doing with folks, but a big part of it is trying to help address reoccurring issues of, you know, so many work-related fires, unfortunately, or.
Mine is yours.
Who recovered and relapsed, and that's a big piece of the drive.
Good evening, everyone. Chief Gamma, welcome. So, program that we do at the police department is called the Post Overdose Support Team, and we visit with social workers from Gamma, the homes of folks that have suffered a drug overdose that is causing, and we offer them resources, try to connect them if they're interested in, in different outreach programs that, that exist in the community or in the greater Garden area, where they can get some help. And of course, that's only in their interest. But for Gamma, I know that the specific funds are going to be utilized, are going to be to fund a permanent, part-time, social worker position, a commission-based position at Gamma. So that would be helpful to us, because when we go on post overdose supporter follow-up, and we make contact with a citizen of the town, and they are interested, Gamma already exists, but now they have, they're going to have more of an independent, full-time resource. So when we refer them to Gamma, we can be a little bit more confident that there's some permanency in the person that's focused on that mission at the Gamma organization. So it's helpful in that sense, is when the town manager referred to it like a prime officer, that's what it is, a social worker at Gamma, it's portion of this money is going to be funded in that position. Specifically in Wichita, in the police department, and the fire department as well, we've talked about using a portion of the money that will be earmarked to the people in Wichita to improve that program that we're already doing. We could add additional classes, we could, you know, fund classes that teach people how to use an arcane, for instance, something like that, teach people how to recognize and respond if they have a family member that suffers an overdose. And we could use some of the money just to educate people so that we can prevent the drug use in the first place, which obviously would give the best outcome, prevent some of the activity from occurring in the first place. And education comes at a cost, so hopefully some of these funds, we're confident will be able to be utilized for that purpose.
Does that respond to your question?
Kind of.
Come back up and ask again, get more specific.
It does answer my question, but it sounds like we're giving up the control to the state and not to you, and you're talking about how you want to use it.
No, so regional, and I don't know particularly the town manager, but the town manager said own this small portion of the mission, and so individually, it's got to be hard.
You still control the world.
Exactly. But we're nobody going to say they're like taking over whatever is inside, in terms of education, outreach program. Exactly. In terms of funding, because of the Gamma.
That's correct. It's an intermunicipal agreement, it's not going to the state. And I also stress that that agreement is for a three-year period, so it's not for that entire sixteen years. And that will provide the town an opportunity to get an update on, or as well, for year one, year two, to review it when we can't agree to decide, consulting with you on the state, or if you want with Joss, in terms of that.
Does anyone else have any other questions for the chief or our town manager? Hearing none. Let's, then what is your vote?
Five fifteen, Madam Moderator.
Thank you very much. Finance committee?
I have the committee recommend five zero.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to the vote. All those in favor, again, this is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of article three as presented, press your clicker one or A. If you are opposed, press your clicker two or B. And the vote is eighty-three percent in favor, seventeen percent opposed. That is a two-thirds vote, and it does pass. Before we go to article four, just like to introduce the chairman of our board of selectmen, who we noticed came. Selectwoman Laurie. We introduced ourselves before you came in. Thank you. Okay, article four is going to be read by selectwoman LaPointe.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. And we've had the town vote to accept the fourth paragraph of Massachusetts General Law Chapter Forty, Section Five B.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve article four. This will be a majority vote when we reach that point. Explanation, please.
Thank you. A vote to approve article four would automatically appropriate the opioid remediation funds year after year, the link to the settlement agreement. Again, we don't have to come back every year at town meeting.
Are there any questions from the audience? Seeing none. The board of selectmen voted one on this article?
Five zero, Madam Moderator.
And the finance committee?
I have the committee recommend five zero.
Thank you very much. Move to the vote. All those in favor of article four as presented, one or A. If you are opposed, press two or B. Eighty-four percent in favor, sixteen percent opposed. It was a majority vote, the article passes. Article five, presented by selectwoman LaPointe.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. And we've had the town vote to dedicate one hundred percent of the received from the statewide opioid settlements to the opioid mitigation stabilization fund beginning on July first, twenty twenty-three.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve article five as presented. It is a majority vote on this article. May I have an explanation, please?
Thank you, yes. A vote to approve article five, to dedicate and appropriate opioid remediation funds for fiscal year twenty-four, and again, I can just stress that this is the first settlement. This does not tie us into the other settlements that may be forthcoming.
Does anyone have any questions on this article? Seeing none. Vote of the board of selectmen was?
Five zero, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. And the finance committee?
I have the committee recommend five zero.
Thank you very much. Let's move to the vote. All those in favor of article five as presented, press one or A. If you are opposed, press two or B. And we have eighty-seven percent in favor of article five, thirteen percent opposed. Majority vote is passed. Article six, vice chair Ward.
Vice Chair Madam Moderator. I'm with that the town vote for establishing annual spending limits for the revolving accounts as presented in article six.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve article six, and we'll have an explanation, please.
Vice Chair Madam Moderator. These four D revolving accounts are reauthorized on an annual basis, and I will point out that these are the same amounts that were before even last year, so there's been no change.
Thank you. Does anyone have a question? Hearing none. The board of selectmen, please.
Four zero, one, and recommend.
And I will note that on this, the one, which is an abstention, all abstentions are based upon the fact that there's a relative involved in one of the groups represented on this article. Finance committee?
I have the committee recommend five zero.
Thank you very much. Let's proceed to vote. And all those in favor of article six, which is a majority vote, one or A. Opposed, two or B. And eighty-eight percent, we're moving up. Voted yes, twelve percent voted no, and the article passes. Article seven, selectwoman Anderson, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $7,700 for fiscal year twenty twenty-four season work off program.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve article seven as presented. This is a majority vote when we get to that point. May I have the explanation, please?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. These funds are proposed to fund the fiscal year twenty twenty-four season work off program.
Are there any questions from anyone in the audience? Seeing none, let's vote. All those in favor of article seven as presented, press one or A. All opposed, press two or B. And we have eighty-seven percent in favor, thirteen percent opposed. The article passes by majority vote. Article eight, vice chair Ward.
I have the board.
You want to try that again?
Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote to raise and vote raise the sum of $27,500 as a grant to the Community Taxation Committee, draw twice the board of selectmen and town managers to enter into a grant agreement for such purposes.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve article eight as presented. May I have an explanation, please?
This was an act of the community, that's just what I'm saying, that all the rights and privileges to the residents of both the neighborhoods and neighborhoods. And I will note that we do it on an annual basis. Last year, it was $25,000. This year, it's been $27,500 to $27,500 by year, because of the need, I'm talking to the board.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Seeing none, let's vote. All those in favor of article eight as presented, one or A. All those opposed, two or B. Eighty-two percent in favor, eighteen percent opposed. It is passed by majority vote. Okay, article nine, selectwoman LaPointe.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. And we've had the town vote to accept the town manager's proposed organizational change staffing prior by article six of the town charter, all is set forth on the document entitled Town Charter.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve article nine as presented. May I have an explanation, please?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This article proposes to accept the town manager's proposed organizational change staffing. As outlined in the document distributed, this was for three changes. By town charter, the plan cannot be altered on town meeting floor, and it must be accepted or rejected at the prior meeting. May I have the town manager, Madam Moderator, to speak?
You have the floor.
Thank you. So if you'd all leave your seat and if you'd like to follow along with me, so what really prompted this was some language in our town charter that included, for the year, prosperity where we develop a lot, but basically the logic short of it is that if there's an organizational change on the town charter, it requires to hold a published year of coverage, such as the local news to be advertised in publication in a local newspaper, and that that proposed organizational plan has to come forward for approval at a town meeting. And so conversations with the local council supported, it's my opinion, that the process that we go through every year for an annual town meeting, it does cover that part, and that we have, and advertise during, through the finance committee, and that we advertise town meeting, you all come here and vote on the budget every year, so we go through that process. But it wasn't a request of transparency, because there are a couple of parts, you know, that was happening to me. So we break this down to do a little bit, so everybody can learn better, understand what it is for actually to post it, which at the end of the day, it's your money, it's your town. So if you'd like to follow along, easiest way to break this down is three changes. So change one, change one of three, what we're proposing to do is to delete the DPW director role and the school maintenance director role. And so what prompted this is the school maintenance director is set to hire in the summer upcoming, I believe, August. There was an opportunity there, we had conversations with schools, and the schools, finance committee, and board of selectmen put forth some representatives, the whole meetings, to discuss the proposition of sharing town school resources, town school employees, basically looking for inefficiencies that currently exist in our operations, and trying to find ways to flip those into efficiencies, so that you can get the same more bad services for less money, which is always a good thing. And one of the solutions was to create a combined director of DPW and school maintenance. So what that would effectively do is remove a higher-level administrative role on the school side, and shift the administrative DPW director role over to help form an umbrella over the schools on the management side of things. One important piece was that we added a director report on the town side, and a director report on the school side, that would be underneath that combined role. So there'd always be someone at the schools, if you had problems at schools, there'd always be someone at the town side, if you had problems at the town side, but those are the mid-management positions, so the salary is lower. What we'd like to do in that, and I'm sorry, house covered in B and C, and so you have management, school maintenance supervisor, and a mid-management DPW engineer supervisor. And so the kicker is, the full projected net change cost in doing that move is zero dollars. And for those of you doing quick math in the audience, we add a position, but it's not costing us anything. I think that probably raises some eyebrows. So the way we're doing that, and it's on the handout as well, is that we are required under national law to participate in the MS four stormwater permitting. We do budget for that purpose, it fluctuates every year, but for the purpose of fiscal twenty-four upcoming, it's about $60,000 a year. So rather than paying Italian bond, for example, or any firm, out of house to do that for us, we would have our in-house engineer do that reporting on behalf of the town. The other piece is, we have. The other piece is, we have peer review fees, so anytime a developer comes forward to the town and has a plan, when they submit it with our office, same thing, you shoot it right out to county bond, you pay county bond to review it, to make sure, you know, by a standard of the year, to make sure it's on yep enough, and then they send it back to us and say, okay. This new DPW engineer supervisor role would cover that as well. And so we were able to look back at trends, and on average, we bring about ninety thousand to a hundred thousand dollars a year in peer review, and we immediately turn right back at the door to pay county bond. Instead, you're going to be paying your own person in Lincoln, it's going to be the same person every time a whole team of years, who's going to be intimately familiar with all the initiatives that you have, all your roads, all your infrastructure. So there's a huge benefit to having that role in town. And so that's changing one of three. Are there any questions or concerns on that we can cover? I figure we can take these one at a time, so we can both of them all, want to keep it fresh, don't you mind?
I don't see any questions.
Okay, everybody, oh, is that Mrs. Watkins?
It is.
Please come up to the microphone and ask your question, Madam Anderson. Go to the microphone. It's the only way we can record.
Feel like we should have some half-half music for it.
David Watkins, Madam Moderator. So my question is, is this going to come from interest? What gets that role? Now we're going to interview, basically writing the show for those that get approved, contractors that keep looking for, you know, approval, assuming it's going to be my program that's going to be in that role? Yeah. I think we need, I think we're a part.
So I think that's a valid concern, and I'll reiterate for anybody that gets in the room, so the concern is, I kind of think, oh, I'm checking down, that's, I guess, it's on capacity, because you're kicking that role, which is presently diversified in some sense, and you're putting it all under one central, this is the rule, and that's an excellent point, to help ease your concerns. Any type of contract or purchase thing actually goes through a pretty thorough process with the state, so this isn't like back in the seventies, eighties, or nineties, you can't get, you can't get a deal anymore. There are new head of executive regulations from the state that went through about ten fifteen years ago at this point, everybody's all versed in the move. But I think the important piece to highlight from a public procurement standpoint, so you need to employ the MCPPO certified, not MCPPO certified, but Mr. Provo actually is also MCPP certified, MCPPO certified. So what that basically means, it's a designation given by the state, your core check, that there's an extra level of scrutiny, so that you have to go through the process of checking the boxes, you can't just hand in that contract, you have to, you know, go through the public bidding process depending on the dollar threshold, you can't get a job for your money, like those days are common, that there's so much oversight that's in place from the town to do that. The other piece is, locally, organizationally, that type of authorization, if there's a project on the town side, for example, today, or, you know, asking is starting to exist, Brian can't just authorize a contract, it actually has to come through my office, I sign off on it, and then even then, I can't issue a payment, it has to go through the accountant's office, they sign off on it. So if anybody's trying to pull somebody, you're going to start voting for your own is one of these. If it's on the school side, same thing, except it would be under super independent schools. So if there is actually, organizationally, a lot of checks and balances and fail safes put into place, helps ease those concerns. Ironically, as it is right now, if there is said and issued with pet reasons on school property, who do you think the first person is in the market calls? Brian Provo?
Sure.
Yeah, so.
I'll call him too.
Yeah, I think honestly half the people just run around, yeah, so I understand your point, and I think there's a good way to give a triple approval down on that coverage, and that's that if this works move forward, the next step would be to have formalized agreement draft between the town and the schools, and we could build an extra layer, just an extra safety net, just in case anybody ever gets tempted to do that. You know, people make errors doing large scale jobs, but a small error can be pretty possible.
Trust me, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, one more to number two. Oh, I'm sorry, I see a hand up there.
Well, I'll ask, I'll ask my question at the end.
Okay, fine, thank you, I didn't see your hand. Okay, number two?
So if you're currently, if you're at third page, we're recommending deleting the director of planning and development role, and it plays promoting the current planning and land use coordinator, the planning and land use agent, which is a leading support move, and we are shifting the economic development duties up to the town manager's office. So this would have total projected net change in cost with a savings of forty thousand dollars. So if we break that down for you, we got that as well, so it's not an order, but we found a way to make this work. So the director of planning and development in town actually resides coming up on it here now, it's been nearly a year. And so when that happens, has it been a year now? It's been over a year, it's been a year and a half. And so, you know, in so many words, the world is cat-curned, but that word doesn't go away. And so I want to kind of break down for everybody in the room, where are those duties going to come to happen? So the more planning specific duties of that role went over to our planning and land use coordinator. So as part of the union, or as part of the union agreement in town hall, if a supervisor leaves, and the individual organizationally underneath them has to pick up some of their duties temporarily, we temporarily give them a partial increase to make up for that temporarily, because they're picking up extra work. And so we have been doing that since Tracy left. The individual, our planning and land use coordinator, not getting specifics, has done excellent jobs, she's supported by the planning and zoning board, and so we're very much covered on the planning side of things. So we're talking about support for planning board meetings, support for the zoning board appeals, we have the business beat, and it's actually, it's really been excellent over the past year plus. The redevelopment duties side of things, that went up to my office, and so what that entails is doing extra work with our exceptional vision for redevelopment authority, over the past year and a half, by the foods to clean up at Ucino Beach Tree, that includes the Hillview project, getting a subdivision on town over behind my left building, it's going to be going forward with the next year, opening campus facilities, recreational laws approved, actually getting doors open, getting revenue flowing on that, those are all things that happen under B without the director role. And so when the time came to build the budget this year, my reasoning was, we have been accepting, why would we needlessly, as a community, spend extra money for a role at this time, you know, in our argument, there's a going in time in town over the end, there may be a point in time again, sometimes return the end, and just build back into the budget. But at this present time, it's not something that we necessarily need. And so it's our obligation, given the time budget here, to return that forty thousand dollars, and save you the extra budget. Other questions, comment?
Yes. I'll take Mr. Vine first.
Yes, thank you, Greg Vine, one eighteen, more said. Just wondering, of the two positions that you're creating here, who will be mainly responsible for, in charge of grants, basically, for doing the live grants, DLTAs, and other grants that are still in the work of the town side?
Sure, and I appreciate that you're highlighting that. So the grant writer piece is what I've heard a lot about, and when we were going through the lesson, and still trying to fill this role, that was one piece we kicked around. The one that's at the higher of grant writer, or our kind of grant writer, which we have seen some communities do recently, we've have been recently posted for one. So another thing I would highlight is, we haven't seen the downturn in grants, in fact, we've seen the opposite. So on the CPB chief, we need to develop a lot of grants, that's actually a duty that is, that we farm up to an asylum, Reesway Farms, Linda O'Brant did an excellent job, and she recently retired. So even when Tracy Murphy is still here, even when that role is still filled, that is something that has been farmed out, we continue to farm it out, and we're in the process of securing it, solving for the upcoming fiscal year. In terms of other grants, I would highlight, and once we have stress, this is not exclusively my work, this is the work of our team, we brought in, we're on trend right now, bringing five million dollars this year in grant funding, usually hovers closer to two million in the past year alone, five million dollars, and that was without having a planning and development director role in place over the past year plus. And so the need really isn't there. One thing that I have stressed, in the capacity of my role, and I think we've had a lot of success as a team in town hall, in our recent departments, is diversifying the duty of securing grants. It's not just one person going out and doing it, we're all up there constantly, we're grinding, trying to bring in money, it's everybody's job, it's not just one person's job. And I think we've seen the results of that. This year in particular, and I think you're going to continue seeing that, because we've woven that into our residential structure. Thanks.
Mr. Dylan White? And you can address your name and address already, so we're fine.
So I have a question, but I have a few thoughts. One is that there has been an issue with not having a planning director. My role suffered from a promise given, a year without being fulfilled, we don't need to go into distance, but the POS task manager's office can do something, he didn't do it for over a year, so the planning director would have done. And in the charter, it explicitly states that one of the primary duties of the manager is to make these positions in the higher priority. And a skeptic might think that this is just a Band-Aid on the fact that the manager was unsuccessful in replacing employees every year. Another issue I have is that we have town meeting, and this will work over because we're a direct democracy, and we're given a choice in such matters. So we're not being given a choice, your only choice is, we accept all three of these changes or we accept none of them. That removes the choice for any of us that are going for one of them, or two of them, or none of them. We don't have a choice, we're being given to change one, two, and three altogether, they should be separated out, so we can have an actual choice. We're not being given a choice, and if you hope that for all three, you're removing the choice of individual citizens. And we do need a planning director, there's a reason we had one before, things felt attractive, I know personally, and this is a Band-Aid, and it's crazy to make all these spring changes, other customer managers leaving, it's only been here for two years, and leaving immediately. And the manager already got a thirty thousand dollar raise.
That has nothing to do with this, please.
The manager has already gotten a thirty thousand dollar raise in order to take on the economic development of the town manager, so the economic development department director. So we're already taking course, but we need to give them a choice, and this is not giving us a choice, it's a certain, it's a great reputation.
Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Town manager's role was not a question, that's the reason I called him on that.
It is, it is part of them, it's right there.
Sir, I'll answer it.
Fine, but that was on a place of attorney.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, so Mr. Ward, I'm going to answer those in reverse, if that's my ability to join along with us. Regarding my raise, I heard, and I'll tell you proudly why, and I'll rehash it, five million dollars in grants this year, I heard it, and I'm glad to talk about it, but you may want to speak. The other piece is, as I highlighted, and you kind of pointed out, I did receive a raise this upcoming fiscal year, and I appreciate that very much. That said, I've been doing the economic development layer job for the past year for free, gratis, so you're welcome. The other piece that I think the highlight is, we touched upon whether or not some things are falling through the cracks, and I appreciate you pointing that out. So Mel's role was paid, there was a piece that was in dispute whether or not it should be recorded, Mr. Ward is making the argument that if we have a planning and development director in place, that that ball wouldn't have been dropped, which I disagree that was dropped, we're saying that that would have been followed through on. But the kicker is, that the board of selection took that vote when Tracy Murphy was still sitting in that seat, it wasn't even in town manager's office, so I appreciate you doing to request one for a role that I wasn't carrying at the time.
Select, select person.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. And just to touch base, nobody has actually embraced this yet, but I wanted to bring it up. This is proposing, as B reads, shift economic development duties to the town manager's role. With the upcoming change in the person who will be sitting in that corner office, board of selection has the opportunity to cautiously look at that job description, make revisions to it if we feel it needs to be revised, maybe add duties, depending on where things stand now, the agreement is two years old, prior to that, I don't know how much changes have been made to that document. So this is actually a unique opportunity for Lincoln to delegate to that position, and ensure that it meets today's standards and covers what we need here in Lincoln today for that position. So that will be addressed as we look at bringing down a new town manager for that term office. Thank you.
I want to turn the mic back to the town manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and there's one more point, one more point that I'd like to stress about our democracy, and I'm not the biggest fan of democracy, and if anybody knows me, knows that, love the flag, big, big system we have, but I would stress, this isn't me saying you don't have a choice, that is not what's happening here, I actually printed it out for you in black and white, that is the language of your own town charter that I hold, that was made in the Democrat process, so I can think of nothing more democratic than following the document that you, the people, reportedly, and it says directly, "The authority of the town meeting concerning the proposed organizational plan shall be limited to the approval or rejection of it. The town meeting shall not vote to amend or to alter the proposed plan." That's not my rule. If there are pieces that you like or don't like, and you want to change things, we've helped a multitude of public meetings, and this is probably the fifteenth time we've covered this topic, in public meetings where we've helped residents with consistency to come in and speak to us, and talk about things that they'd like to see in their house, and to make the argument that we're trying to hammer something through, or trying to thwart their hand, spread their disingenuous, we're upholding the rules, and you people vote for.
Thank you. Does anyone else, yes, sir, this is your second time, by the way.
For including to seek a raise by getting grants, a whole that is a successful job, it is a successful job to get grants, but in the Commonwealth, the way the towns get our income tax back to the town is through grants, that's a major part of how we get our funding back, that we put into our income, through our income tax. And for everybody to keep going back to, I got this much money in grants, therefore you should give me a raise, therefore I'm a great person, well, that's the job, getting grants is part of the job. And these should be separated out, however you feel about it, they should be separated out, we're not being given a choice to vote for one or not.
Thank you, I have another comment.
Good evening, all, I'm Molly.
Name and address.
Oh, sorry, Molly Jalisco, thirty-one Cross Street. So I just have a couple of questions. So one, we were wondering how we're voting on it, is it a separate vote, or is it one vote for everyone?
It's the player that is entirely.
Okay, and then the second one is, I wonder, congratulations, you're on a great effort, like, to get five million dollars back into the state, typically we don't get as much, and there hasn't been a lot of conference meetings. I guess my question is, just in the event that maybe some candidate that we really like doesn't have that experience, would there be an opportunity in the budget somewhere to then be able to allocate some of this savings to a consultant or a manager, things that turns out to be an area of need in the future, or would we have to wait for a whole nother town meeting to vote for it next spring, and then that means, let's say, you're kind of with, I'll have condition, that's my question.
Sure.
Thank you.
Great question, and I would just stress for the record, and I don't want to speak before, and I don't want to keep talking about money, but once again, it's your money, you trust me with it, so I appreciate it. It's not just about bringing the grants, I'm actually, to this day, I appreciate it myself, don't get me wrong, but I'm making less than my predecessors, predecessors are making, for inflation, I'm actually making less than I already earn for him. And so, you know, I appreciate your thoughts on the problem, but of course, it's got that money. The other piece, hands of Molly, thank you for the question, we actually did build it in the budget, at the board's length request, we can force site a supplemental amount of money to hire outside consultants for grants, but I would also stress, and I'll reach out a point that I brought up, with that five million dollars, I did not bring in that five million dollars, I love team that brought. I love the team that brought that five million dollars. It's a lot acknowledged that I'm moving on. You have some advocates still sitting in some of these seats. And I guarantee you're still going to see some grant funds rolling in because, and I don't want to speak for them, but for me, and I think their agreement is personal, the way I view it is this town earned it. You pay into it. You deserve that money. And it's just going to sit and be in Hitler down in Washington DC until somebody gets up off their bottom and goes out and gets that money. And that's how I always show you that. And we have a lot of staff that have been behind the troops sitting exactly that way.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions on question two? Just come up, name and address.
Wayne Presto, 95, Congress. Basically, I just have a comment on especially this one. Melon Drive, Congress Drive, and that whole development. The planning board did not follow up on the escrow accounts and things like that. And I'm hoping that this agent will make the developers do what they agreed to. Because Agent in Heights is a whole mess. The roads were never put in the way they were supposed to. A few years back, before you, there wasn't money. But we've got about a 30% increase in our taxes this year. And I'm hoping that that will cover a lot of this cleanup of past problems. And I'm hoping that this agent will keep the planning board on track. And, you know, they say that they're going to, they said the developers have to do something, but they never follow up on it. And it's really, I mean, board of selectmen and the town manager at the time wanted the residents to pay for the road that was supposed to be finished. And the planning board, three times, lost that money. So you need somebody in this position that is going to be able to keep track of everything. Because I still see things going through the planning board that should never be going through a council.
You raise an excellent point. And actually, as I said, you're on Congress, I know exactly the direction that your conflict was going to go into. So, but I think that stress is an important point. So when those developments went in, we haven't played an economic development director sitting in seat that long too in the states where we. So that's not necessarily bad for it. The other piece is, the current planning and development board here, so that seat has actually popped with old things that stuck through. I think a good example is, you know, working with the planning board. When McDonald's came back through, back in, you know, started to push one. They were supposed to put in a sidewalk. McDonald's was supposed to pay for it. And they didn't. We can't put a crosswalk there modernized, turned, you know, up to date, sound stock standards, because there's nowhere for the crosswalk to turn me. Nicole popped that, working, working with the planning board. And so I think what you're going to see is a real professionalization in that area. And I would stress, Mr. DeWort was talking to Fitz, although we do, but I would stress that we haven't forgotten about you, and we actually regularly talk about, not only you, but several others as well, that run into similar problems where, you know, the bond, the bond was given back. The blood wasn't there. The developer walked away. The town board, the town board, that was one, or the best, and we are working towards a solution on that.
That's the fact that the bank was holding their mortgage twice, said that they were going to put in an escrow account, and then went belly up. So, I mean.
And you're caught holding back.
Yeah. They wanted to put out, have them, you know, probably, the length of the thing, that probably $500,000. You know? Because the road's going to have to be rounded up and everything else because it was never put in correctly. In that way, you're going to be putting money in the board every year, so.
Thank you for your concern. Name and address.
All the board's directed. So Harvard Drive was accepted by the towns off to the surface in 1992, 1993, and coming through. And currently, as in the last couple of weeks, we've met with some buildings on the table, something in whole. And they're looking at finishing that development. It's 59 ounces. One developer is looking to come in, finish 59 ounces. And one thing that needs to be borne clear when we're there is that the unapproved taxes, probably about a thousand feet, is going to be paid by the board coming in to build the building. The second thing is, everybody talks about bonds getting lost all in that respect. Well, that's changed. At the 24th meeting a couple of months ago, we put up, we put another form in place that doesn't allow a project to get signed off until I go into the spectrum road and it's also accepted by the planning board. So until that form is signed by both parties, that money stays as a bond for the town. Because we don't want to have a Harvard Drive after that, or a Melon Road, any of the others, some of the buildings are up, they're not directly. Those days are gone, and we want to move to a day director here on.
This is your second time at the mic, so just a reminder.
You said that there's, that developers looking at finishing it? Does the current owner, which is the owner, is Tyron Bond? Does he's a man, a person who wants to keep playing the unusual? I'm just asking if he's on board with that.
I personally agree with him on the election.
Can we get back to the article, please? Anybody else have any comments or questions? It's going on up here.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. And the past, or I'll say the last piece, three, is the addition of a recreation coordinator. So as you are all probably aware, Cat had a hard time as our coordinator doing an exceptional job, funded by the Rockford Foundation over the past year. Thank you, Madam Moderator, for your generosity. They have committed to funding that position in a full-time capacity. So that's why it says total projected debt changing cost zero. But I put an asterisk there because I'm a top of the list a little bit more. You know, that's always the part of it. So that money from the Rockford Foundation isn't going to be there forever. They've agreed over the next couple of years to help Amptier get its feet under itself, be self-supporting, and for the recreation to learn and develop strategies to provide additional revenue. So then they'll be largely self-supporting. I'd say 100% or close to it. And they're working really hard towards that goal. So you have a couple of years to get to that point before you have to build that in. But the important piece is, and I'm sure a lot of you have seen it, the amount of programming, not just paid, but a ton of career programming that the rep commission is going to be putting on, or the Carson Rep over the next year. This summer in particular, we're going to have fireworks back in town for the first time in a long time. This isn't, this isn't just, I heard some, we're almost excited over that. So that's on June 9th, down at Amptier. So this money isn't disappearing. This is another one on our team who's out there, and she's getting it. She's working for it. So I just want to stress, everybody, that that's not, you're not taking on an obligation there. This is something that was good for the town. It's going to be largely self-funded, and it's going to create a lot of excellent programming for all the people that live here. So you're going to get some extra stuff to do. But I'm looking for the people at Winchester, and this is an important piece, and I want to stress this a lot. Now, Amptier, the intent is also to be a regional draw. And so I was talking with somebody in my office about this today. If you think about the amount of people that drive out of Winchester, they go spend their money in surrounding communities, drive up to Ranger Garden, or go spend groceries near the Amptier's money, giving it away out of the towns. If you support this Amptier, like truly, full-heartedly, you can put everything you have on it as a community. It's an opportunity to be a regional draw. You're getting people from surrounding communities to drive to the town, and then you not give up their money afterwards. That's the important piece, that some of this community really needs. So you're fighting things in the other direction. And when they go to events or activities at the Amptier, they're not just going there believing. They're stopping, they're filling their tank, or they're grabbing something to eat. They're grabbing earth, you know, once most of it is removed. That's important from an economic standpoint. So this is something that is going to make you money, I guarantee you. But you need to stick with it. You need to support it. It's true of the day.
Does anyone have any questions? Please come up to the mic. And you've been up before, so we have a leave and address here that we need to repeat.
I just had a general question in regards to the article itself. The board of selectmen recommended four to one. And I'd like to know on the one that did not recommend.
And gee, I was going to ask that after I got the vote from the select board. Thanks for asking it. Will we wait till I get the votes? Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Time to vote. This is a majority vote. I will ask the board of selectmen to give us their report of vote.
Board of selectmen recommended the article for in favor, one against.
And the one vote against, I always ask if the person wishes to speak on that.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I had a problem with this particular article because the preconditions I felt should have been broken down into various articles so that people can truly have a vote on what they chose in the way that it's worded, it's all or nothing. And the other part of that is that each town manager is leaving and developing in that seat and not sure who we're going to get to replace him. I felt it was unfair to change the structure of town halls this time.
Town manager wishes to speak today.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. And I do appreciate the selectman's concerns on the first part of the ruling we addressed very exciting. The second piece, though, about me leaving, the timing, the timing is actually probably the best thing that could happen because it's an opportunity for you as a community to identify an individual to come in and take this seat and own it, have a full understanding of what's before them. When I came to town, the Amptier hadn't broken ground yet. But what I learned, and I worked to work with a team, and they'll leave that team, and getting that thing built, and getting the system up and running for the summer. So it's, you know, I am humbly, and I will tell you I'm good at my job, but I'm not a magician. I don't have a book of tricks that I pull, probably. If you find an experienced individual, they're going to be able to do the things I do. And they may have strengths in other areas. I don't know. I'm not perfect. But I appreciate your support, indeed, Barbara. And so the other, another piece I highlight is, call the folks here, please participate in the process when you're searching for a new town manager. This board, they want to hear from you genuinely. And I know sometimes where they sit, it's difficult. Sometimes you're screaming to the board to get feedback. But at the end of the day, the person that's sitting in my shoes from an administrative standpoint is running your town. Very important. It's a very important role. And so please do give the selectman feedback and participate in that process. And as always, I'm always a son of Winchester forever in some capacity. So pick up the phone, we'll always have your talent.
Thank you. The vote of the finance committee.
My ass committee recommends five to two.
Okay. This is a majority vote article. They're voting on all three at the same time. All those in favor of Article nine as presented, press one or A. Opposed, press two or B. Vote. 68%, yes. 32%, no. Majority vote allows, and that article's passed. Article 10, Vice Chair Warren, please.
I believe that the town hoped to raise appropriate and cancerous other available funds in total sum of $16,742,226 for the operating budget of the town for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023, all except for in the warrant under Article 10. And each line added in the budget are appearing in the warrant to be approved as a separate appropriation.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to a point of approve Article 10. I'll ask for the explanation, and then we'll go through each of the articles.
This article proposes a funding for the town operating by the fiscal year 2024. The eastern part of the collection thereof is a whole budget identified expenses and where applicable salaries in all such lines as identified therein are to be considered separate appropriations.
Thank you. If you wish to speak on any one of these articles under the General Fund Appropriations Summary, we'll go through them one at a time, the top category. And please say hold if you wish to place a hold on that. And at the end, we will go through all of them. And a reminder, if you have a hold and you wish to speak, no problem. Love to hear from you, but please leave out individual names. School transportation. YMCA. Selectment. Town manager. Finance committee. OPEB study. Accounting. Assessor. Collector/Treasurer. Legal expense. Data processing. Technology. Communications committee. Town clerk. Registrar of voters. Conservation. Planning board. Zoning board. Community development. Town hall. Police. Dispatch. Bar. Ambulance. Land use. Emergency management. Animal control. DPW administration. DPW highway. DPW fleet maintenance. DPW snow and ice. DPW street lighting. Landfill. DPW cemetery. DPW tree trimming. Health department. Board of health outside service. Board of health visiting nurse. Cancel on aging. Veterans services. Vils library. Recreation committee. Historic commission. Debt service principal. Debt service interest. State assessment expense. Other state assessment expenses. Other state assessment expenses. Other regional assessment. Pension. Workers' compensation. Unemployment insurance. Health insurance employer. Life insurance employer. Medicare tax. Property slash liability insurance. Capital improvements. Transfers. I did not hear any votes. Therefore, let's proceed to vote on Article ten. All those in favor of Article ten, which is a majority vote article, press A or one. If you are opposed, press B or two. Please vote now. And a majority vote, eighty-seven percent in favor, thirteen percent opposed. The article passes. Article eleven, Selectwoman Anderson, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of one million, twelve thousand, five hundred forty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents for direct costs of the Water Department Enterprise Fund for the fiscal year beginning July first, 2023, and that indirect cost of one hundred ninety-three thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars and fifteen cents. Appropriated into the general government budget be funded by wastewater receipts.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to pass Article eleven as presented. May I have the explanation, please?
Yes, Madam Moderator. This article proposes to fund the FY twenty-four Water Department Enterprise operations.
Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article eleven as presented, press one or A. All those opposed, press two or B. Please vote. I forgot to ask this. I'm sorry. Okay, it's eighty-six percent to fourteen, but let's go back. What was the Board of Selectmen vote on that?
Five zero.
Thank you. And the Finance Committee?
Five zero.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to show. Article twelve, Chairwoman Labrie.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of one million, four hundred forty-seven thousand, five hundred thirty-four dollars made up of wastewater receipts of one million, two thousand, one hundred twenty-four dollars and debit revenues of four hundred forty-five thousand, four hundred and ten dollars for the direct costs of the wastewater treatment department enterprise fund for the fiscal year beginning July first, 2023, and that indirect costs of one hundred seventy... Thank you, pardon? One hundred seventy-three thousand, ninety-seven dollars and forty cents appropriated in the general government budget be funded by wastewater receipts.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Article twelve as presented. Explanation, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. It's typical of these enterprise funds. We need to take money, fund the fund, to pay for the running of the fund. So this article proposes just to do that, to fund the FY twenty-four wastewater department operations from the fund. And it is projected to be balanced.
Thank you. This is a majority vote. Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none. Board of Selectmen, please give me your vote.
Board of Selectmen recommends approval five zero.
Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee recommends five zero.
If you are in favor of Article thirteen as presented... Twelve, I'm sorry. Article twelve is presented, vote one or A. Article two, if you're against, vote two or B. Please vote. Eighty-seven percent in favor, that's definitely a majority, to thirteen percent opposed. The article passes. Article thirteen, Chairwoman Labrie.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of two hundred four-two thousand, three hundred thirty-seven dollars from transportation receipts for direct costs of the Transportation Enterprise Fund for the fiscal year beginning July first, 2023, and that indirect cost of thirteen thousand, seven hundred sixty-one dollars and thirty-four cents appropriated in the general government budget to be funded by the Transportation receipts.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article thirteen as presented. Explanation, please.
Thank you. As in previous article, the Enterprise Fund, this article will propose the FY twenty-four Station, Transportation Enterprise operation.
Thank you. This is a majority vote. Does anyone have any questions? We got a young voter in the hall who was interested. Seeing no questions, let's proceed to vote. The Board of Selectmen recommends...
Board of Selectmen recommends approving this article five zero.
And the Finance Committee recommends? Thank you very much. If you are in favor of Article thirteen as presented, please press one or A. If you are opposed to Article thirteen, please press two or B. Vote now. Eighty-eight percent in favor, thirteen percent opposed. The article passes by a majority vote. Article fourteen, this is the halfway point, folks. Selectwoman, a point.
This town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred eleven thousand, eight hundred dollars to operate a public information and government access meeting that's described for the fiscal year beginning July first, 2023, of which thirty-five thousand dollars is appropriated for personnel costs and seventy-six thousand, three hundred dollars is appropriated for expenses.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Would you like to speak to a motion, please?
Thank you. This article proposes to fund the fiscal year twenty-four Public Cable Access Enterprise account, which is what we form when we have our...
Are there any questions? This will require a majority vote as well. Vote the Board of Selectmen.
We recommend it five zero.
Thank you. And Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends five zero.
Let's proceed to vote. All those in favor of Article fourteen as presented, press one or A. If you are opposed, press two or B. Please vote. And it is eighty-two percent in the affirmative, eighteen percent in the negative. The article passes by a majority vote. Article fifteen. General School Committee reading this one? Maybe?
Maybe. Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of sixteen million, nine hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars for quiet net school spending of twenty million, one hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars, plus the fifty thousand dollars of the prior year's override that includes an escalator and increased funding less three million, one hundred ninety-seven, four hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-four cents for net school spending and eligible indirect cost budgeted in the general government budget for school expenses and for the operating budget of the Washington Public Schools for the fiscal year beginning July first, 2023.
I hear a second that this article has been moved and seconded. Explanation, please.
This budget is the amount requested by the School Committee for the FY twenty-four School Department operations. The proposed School Department budget has been discussed and approved by the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and Action Committee.
Does anyone have questions?
Madam Moderator?
Yes, please.
I just have a comment. I don't remember what year it was that we passed the proposition two and a half override, but I just want to point out, I hope people realize, and I want to make sure they see, that this article right here shows our school and our town departments finally working together. Historically, that override was passed with schools in line three, although that's not what that requires. And the two groups have had numerous conversations, and the town manager and superintendent have been working really well together. And I hope people note that the school this year is actually only keeping fifty thousand dollars of that override, and the rest is going to the town for this year. So I just wanted to point out that, um, you know, collective...
Thank you very much. Okay. I didn't see any questions beyond that. Okay. Vote of the Selectmen?
Five zero, we recommend.
And the Finance Committee?
Five zero.
Thank you. This requires a majority vote. If you are in favor of the school budget as presented, please press one or A. If you are opposed to the school budget as presented, press two or B. Please vote now. The vote is seventy-five percent in favor, twenty-five percent opposed. The majority vote is passed at seventy-five. Article sixteen, Selectwoman Anderson, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of seven hundred six thousand dollars and sixty dollars to fund the town assessment for chair of the Monty Tech Regional Vocational Technical School for the fiscal year beginning July first, 2023.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Article sixteen. Explanation, please.
Yes, ma'am. This article proposes to fund the FY twenty-four Enterprise Fund for the Monty Tech Regional Vocational Technical School for the town and the sort of people who are there.
And is there anyone from Monty Tech here to speak to this motion? No. Okay. Any questions? Hearing none. This article requires a majority vote. We need the vote of the Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen recommended five zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommended five zero.
Let's proceed to vote. Thank you. If you are in favor of the Monty Tech budget, press one or A. If you are opposed, press two or B. Please vote now. The vote is seventy-three percent in favor, twenty-seven percent opposed. The article passes. Article seventeen, Chairwoman Labrie.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The next several articles are our capital articles. And as we represented in the Board of Selectmen on the capital planning committee, I volunteered to present all seven of these articles. So before we get to the next article, we just want to call to your attention this handout that you were giving when you came in this evening. And this breaks down the individual items that we need to go beyond. And it gives an overall view of where the funding shows that is coming from. If you read through the articles, you will see the articles divided up by funding source. This stage is the overall view of what an item is costing, and the other funds projected are proposed to town.
Can I have a motion?
Now we'll wait back and talk again, Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote approves Article seventeen as printed in your warrant.
There is a second. All those in... Oh, I'm sorry. It's been moved and seconded to approve Article seventeen as printed in your handout. The explanation, I think we already had it, but let's do it again.
Certainly, Madam Moderator. So this article is for taking money for free cash. You see in your warrant, there's one, two, three, four, five different capital planning items. And I will make a brief note. We were fortunate to see the Capital Planning Committee receive requests for items. And as you have reported this evening, we felt that we had funding available for requests that were received. So another hour, we had to keep in shoes and script and script. This should be fairly weekly this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none. What was the Board of Selectmen's vote on this?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval five zero.
And the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends five zero.
Thank you. This article requires a majority vote. All those in favor of Article seventeen as printed, press one or A. If you are opposed, press two or B. Please vote. Eighty-three percent in favor, seventeen percent opposed. The article passes. Article eighteen, back to the chair.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote to borrow the sum of seven hundred eighty-four thousand, one hundred eighty-one dollars and approve Article eighteen as printed.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article eighteen as printed. I will begin by saying this will require a two-thirds vote. I'll be back a couple times after. Do you want to speak to the article, please?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This article is for, we have the funding available over a five-year period in order to finance.
Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none. Board of Selectmen vote?
Board of Selectmen recommends Article five zero.
And the Finance Committee? Thank you very much. Again, this is a two-thirds vote. If you are in favor of Article eighteen as presented, please press one or A. If you are opposed, please press two or B. Please vote. Seventy-three percent in favor, twenty-seven percent opposed. The article passes by a two-thirds vote. Article nineteen.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote to borrow the sum of two hundred twenty-three thousand, four hundred eleven dollars and approve Article nineteen as printed. Provided, however, that while these will be general bonds of the town, it is anticipated that the principal in interest for the same will be paid for from the Transportation Enterprise.
This has been moved and seconded. This requires a two-thirds vote as well. Explanation, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So for the Transportation Enterprise Fund, this would be a ten-year loan, and proposal is for to make those debt payments from the revenues from the Transportation Enterprise Fund.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none. Vote of the Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval five zero.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommended five zero.
Thank you very much. Again, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article nineteen as printed, press A or one. If you are opposed, press B or two. Please vote now. And it is seventy-five percent in favor, twenty-five percent opposed. The article passes by a two-thirds vote. Article twenty.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote to borrow the sum of ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred eighty-four dollars and approve Article twenty as printed.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article twenty as printed in your vote area pamphlet. This is a two-thirds vote as well. Explanation.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Again, this was an article, this would be a five-year loan period, and that they would fight it through the Water Enterprise Fund.
Does anyone have any questions? I don't see any vote of the Selectmen. I don't see any vote of the selectmen.
Board of selectmen recommends approval, five, zero.
Finance committee?
Finance committee recommended five, zero.
Thank you. If you are in favor of Article 20 as printed, press one or A. If you are opposed, press two or B. Please vote now. And it is 74% in favor, 26% opposed. The article passes by a two-thirds vote. Number 21.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote raise an appropriate the sum of $136,918 and approve Article 21 as printed.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 21 as printed. This is a majority vote. Explanation, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This proposed expense would be funded through the 911 grant.
Does anyone have any questions? Seeing none. Board of selectmen recommendation was?
We recommend approval, five, zero.
And the finance committee?
Finance committee recommended five, zero.
Thank you. If you are in favor of Article 21 as presented, please press one or A. If you are opposed, please press two or B. 84% in favor, 16% opposed. It is a majority, and therefore this article passes. Article 22.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote approve Article 22 as printed.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 22. This is a majority vote. Explanation.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This is a portion of the proposed FY '24 capital improvement plan item. Looking to be funding, portion of the FY '24 paving plan from free cash. And in the next article, you will see that we are proposing borrowing. This is something that you had, I don't believe you've seen before in discussions with, just what any person in town, I think it's citizens have come in, of the usual roads. We all recognize that when you have a large number of roads, just in Winchester, we are physically a large town. We had a survey done four, five years ago, if I remember correctly, that we needed, I don't know, $60 million to bring them all up to speed, to current everything. So this is being a little bit more proactive. The DBW department each year gets a percentage from the state, and we do what we can with that amount. But this year, we're looking to be, as I said, a little bit proactive, a little more aggressive, and actually contribute from our own side of things to get more of the town, towns' roads paved and improved to some degree. So that this is the first article we see on the project plan FY '24. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. This would be from, funded from free cash. My apologies, I didn't say that.
Correct. Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Hearing none. This is a majority vote. What was the recommendation of the board of selectmen?
The board recommends approval, five, zero.
And the finance committee?
Finance committee recommended four, and one again.
And is the personal finance committee interested in speaking to the one?
The objection is not with the use of the money to pay, it's the timing. We won't know what our free cash, certified free cash is until the fall. And my objection was that we now spent, assuming we passed this article, many dollars of about $120 million of free cash. And then every year, we would recoup all of that. On the other hand, we might recoup none of that during free cash. So from my perspective, it made more sense to wait until the fall, count the year, and order that article then.
Thank you. Okay. Let's vote. All those in favor of Article 22 as printed, vote one or A. If you are opposed, two or B. Majority vote. 65% in favor, 35% opposed. Because it is a majority vote, it is a pass on this article. So it does pass. Article 23.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote to borrow the sum of $450,000 and approve Article 3 as printed.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 23 as printed. This will require a two-thirds vote. Explanation, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. And I know that this is, we're recommending a five-year borrowing period, time period on this. This is the second question of the proposed FY '24 capital improvement paving plan. We anticipate the conservative, using a conservative amount of projected cannabis excise tax revenue to help cover annual expenses from the borrowing. It's recommended to use cannabis revenue for one-time capital expenditures. That would be an appropriate use for those funds. The project in question was supported by the Capitol Planning Committee, and by five, zero, recommended by the planning board of selectmen.
Does, thank you. Does anyone have questions on this? Hearing none. Vote of the board of selectmen?
Five, zero, recommend.
And the finance committee?
Finance committee recommended five, zero.
Thank you. Once again, this is a two-thirds vote. If you are in, if you are in support of Article 23, vote one or A. If you are opposed, vote two or B. Please vote. The vote is 79% in favor, 21% opposed, and that is above the two-thirds requirement. Therefore, this article passes. Article 24, Vice Chair Ward.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote transfer from cemetery perpetual care fund the sum of $12,250 and approve Article 24 as printed.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 24 as printed. Majority vote. May I have an explanation, please?
This portion of the proposed would be approved by capital improvement plan as printed in the warrant. It's recommended to be funded through the use of perpetual care funds. These funds are to be used exclusively for the upkeep of the cemetery. The project in question was supported unanimously by the Capitol Planning Committee.
And I believe it's for a leaf, something like that. Leaf? Clover. Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none. Vote of the board of selectmen?
Board of selectmen recommend.
Thank you. Finance committee?
Finance committee recommended five, zero.
Thank you very much. Using your clippers, if you are in favor of Article 24 as printed, please press one or A. If you are opposed, please press two or B. Vote now. By majority vote, 81% in favor, 19% opposed. The article passes by a majority vote. Article 25.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote transfer of the cemetery perpetual care fund the sum of $50,000 to expand the town cemetery and existing town-owned property into a two-article 25 as printed.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 25 as printed. This is a majority vote article. Explanation, please.
This portion of the proposed FY '24 capital improvement plan as printed in the warrant is recommended to be funded through the use of perpetual care funds. These funds are to be used exclusively for the upkeep of the cemetery. This expansion would occur on town-owned land that would not require a land purchase. The project in question was supported unanimously by the Capitol Planning Committee.
Any questions? Hearing none. Vote of the board of selectmen?
Board of selectmen recommend.
Thank you. Finance committee?
Finance committee recommended five, zero.
Thank you very much. All those in favor of Article 25, which is a majority vote, please vote one or A. If you are opposed, vote two or B. Vote now. And 80% voted in favor, 20% were opposed. Article passes by majority vote. Planning board articles. Article 26, Mr. Commissar, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote to amend chapter nine of the zoning bylaws of the town. It tells us, they need to put chapter nine and certain limits placing new chapter regulating the use of signs in the nation. As recommended by the planning board, and shown in the document entitled 2023 Proposed Zoning Dialogue Divisions on file in the office of the town for.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 26 as presented. This would require a two-thirds vote. May I have an explanation, please?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Chapter nine of our zoning bylaws began in signage, was identified nearly two years ago as being outdated, unclear, and at times legally restricted. An effort to update this chapter was narrowly defeated at the May 16, 2022 annual town meeting. In an effort to make a new report comprehensive, reasonable, and business-friendly document, the planning board has spent the last year of zoning filming, exhausted public review process. This helped craft a more complete document, and hopefully included input from members of the general public. When this involves zoning changes, a group of folks will be involved. And now, Madam Moderator, I would like to introduce our planning and development coordinator for a bit more explanation on the changes that we've made since the last time you took over.
Hello, everyone. I'm so I'll be brief. Nicole Roberts, I am the coordinator. So Article nine, as calling names, lost by nearly a few votes. And I think it's important to take a look at Article, now, the zoning bylaws identified as Article 26 in the town meetings warrant article, as the changes that have been made. So the changes that have been made are now the planning board has become the granting authority for signs. Oftentimes, large projects come through our office, and the planning board, you know, it stops with signs. Sign goes to ZDA, because higher two is associated with the granting authority for the signs. So I think it's important that large projects and signage stay with the planning board. So that's one of the changes that we made. And I refer into an article we had out earlier when we first arrived. Electronic signs are not permitted in any zone in our town. How many of you have heard about the fire station in the fire sign? It's beautiful. You know, it allows us to be informed on anything that's going on, whether it be fun events or events of emergency that people need to be notified rather quickly. Well, in our old sign bylaws, those were not allowed. So for the very beginning, the fire department was able to be granted their sign. The American Legion on Soul Street, they had an old sign, I'm sure some of you around can speak for this. An old sign, it was blue, it had a arrow pointing to the Legion. And every single time Trump drove by, it would blow the letters off of the sign, so they'd have to redo it. While they support the ZDA, and they go there and show their sign, and they're looking promising to be built, and it's going to be beautiful. Mission Community Park, just went to go to the board of appeals. Again, beautiful amphitheater that was just built. I'm sure you all know what's happening this weekend, and what's going on. Well, there's a sign that's going to say that. And there's a beautiful sign that's going to be written as far as, you know, what the forecast offer, what kind of events are coming up. As well as, keep in mind, all of these organizations have also agreed to advertise town events, like the town meeting, like the mission hall festival. Currently, right now, as it stands, we turn highways on, but amounts tonight's annual town meeting are technically not allowed, and mustn't start special for that. Obviously, we're not applying that rule, but I don't think applying to the council or the field every single month, for every single meeting, for every single event we have to post, nor whatever request or anything else is requested in the town, i.e., all that's town eating, burning from the fire station again, you know, it just seems like unnecessary staffing, unnecessary work, and unnecessary weeks in town. Also, if the sign is not listed in our bylaws, it simply does not exist. Now, you see that the sign is, the planning board is very reserved, right? Ever since 2020, people are coming up with creative signs, creative ways of doing business, and things that we may have never thought of when the sign bylaws were created. But now, the planning board has the authority to grant those signs as long as they can be used. So I think it's very important to look at the sign bylaws in that too, to see that it's now easy to read. There's no more going back and reusing and rereading. You know, the ones that I say, oh, I think that's right in the file. It's right there. There's more signs. There's a lot of new signs. There's the state high schools. There's the state elementary high school. There's the state kindergarten high school. Those are now allowed. Side walk signs, for most businesses now in town. Those are going to be allowed. And awnings. You know, we have all the older awnings outside the, the nail salon. And those are now going to be allowed. And then we do one last thought. Do you all know where the, where the Berry Taps? You know, the Berry Taps, that is a wonderful business. She's a woman, she started her business here in Winchester. And she has beautifully painted, prophesied blue business on Henry Street. And she has this beautiful sign. And that is the only size sign that is allowed on her large building. And by passing Article 26 this evening, that will allow her to put a sign on the building that fits into the form of the building. So it's nice and big, saying, you know, I'm a downtown business, I'm here on Central Street, I'm looking for business, please visit my store. So I ask that you take all this into consideration tonight, and consider your vote. It's important that we unify what you did. A lot of good things are happening. And I think an outdated sign by law should be one of those sticks. So thank you for listening, and thank you for all.
Does anyone have questions? Anyone have any words? Hearing none. How would the board of selectmen vote on this?
Board of selectmen voted to recommend Article 5, 0.
Okay. And the finance committee?
Finance committee recommended five, zero.
Okay. Because this is a zulu change, you need a two-thirds vote. If you are in favor of Article 26 as presented, press one or A. If you are opposed, press two or B. Vote now. 87% in favor, 13% opposed. The article passes by a two-thirds. And last item of the evening, the selectmen board.
I move that the town vote approve the sum of $135,250 and approve Article 27 as printed.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Article number 27 as printed. Majority vote required. May I have an explanation, please?
This article was requested by National Intelligence Protection as a requirement for receipt of the $81,275 grant by the Social Services for water asset management department. The total project cost of $35,675 is prescribed the $81,275 grant. 60% of the project cost. We wish the town to be rehearsed or by national agencies in the management department to be authorized. It will be funded by any kind of services provided by the town by the capital means out. They can find a solution in the town, American Rescue, Clean Act, financial value at all United States, and so on. The project will help us with its catalog, our existing assets, it will help support our change in regularity, and care.
It will help support our maintenance regularly, repair, maintenance, and quiet infrastructure over the next ten years' period. An incorporation is necessary to fund this project, grant reimbursement for Mass D E P. However, it is anticipated that the only cash revenue from this project is the advantage of that of eighty thousand, twenty nine services.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none, what is the selectmen's recommendation?
Five-zero to recommend.
And Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends five-zero.
Let's proceed to vote. If you are in favor of Article twenty-seven as presented in print, vote one or A. If you are, vote two or B. And eighty-seven percent approve, thirteen percent opposed. The article passes by a majority vote. It's been moved and seconded to the chair.